Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to Albany City Council Meeting, February 12th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. I now call the meeting to order, and would you please all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States. Public publicist standing.
So thank you all for joining me with the Pledge of Allegiance. Eric, would you please do a roll call?
Counselor Montague?
Here.
Counselor McLeod?
Present.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor McGee?
Present.
Counselor Newton Azor?
Present.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Thompson?
Here.
Thank you very much for that. Next on tonight's agenda is a public hearing for setting the fees, fee for adjustment of the land use standards authorized in the Governor's Housing Bill, Senate Bill 1537. For those who wish to testify, there were three options available, which were described in the council agenda. I now declare the public hearing open at 6:01. Does the staff have a report?
Sure, and I'll keep it brief. I'm David Martino, the current planning manager for the city. So Senate Bill 1537 was adopted last May by the Oregon State Legislature. And what it's trying to do here is to find relief for housing in terms of, say, standards that might preclude lowering prices for housing or maybe adding a unit. So what this does is that it adjusts, it provides for the opportunity for adjustments to be granted, generally up to about 10% of numeric developmental standards, like lock coverage or setbacks, that type of thing. Or it could be design standards, like the amount of window transparency that's required. And so this allows applicants to request up to 10 variances, and the fee that's being proposed is based on application fees that are similar in scope. And in fact, the $93 fee for each consecutive one is based on our fee for minor variances. So it's what we're asking is really keeping in line with what the, the type of analysis that would be needed.
Thank you. There was no written material submitted, and no one signed up to speak virtually. I will now call upon those registered to speak in person, if any. So I see that no one signed up to speak. I will now call, let me see. I will now call on those in chambers that would like to address this matter in the public hearing. No one? I will now call on, excuse me, I would declare the public hearing closed at 6:03. Counsel, any discussion? Please.
Yes. And I realize tonight, it's just the fee portion, and I have no problem with the logic set out for, for the fees. But the, the underlying bill, the underlying bill, Senate Bill 1537, and I looked at the testimony of that bill. It's a very important bill in 2024, the Governor's Housing, kind of Housing Production Initiative. And here was a quote, "There is no guarantee these, quote unquote, 'adjustments' will result in more housing, reduce processing time, or more affordable housing." And that was Matthew Reckers on behalf of the City of Albany. And so a general theme tonight, because later on, we're going to talk about the Albany Development Code. And I appreciate that thought. That's, that's exactly where I am at this. These adjustments, these changes to longstanding local requirements are significant. And, you know, I appreciate that comment, but I wonder, after being told for many years that we have to do this, whether it's this bill or other similar bills, we have to do, well, clearly, clearly, we raised some serious objections to it. And we weren't the only ones. You can look through the testimony. There was many objections to it. So if I vote no, it's because of the underlying bill. It's not because of the fees tonight. That's, that's what I wanted to say.
Any other counsel have any comments? Would the counsel like to make a motion?
I move to approve a resolution setting fees for adjustments to land use standards authorized in the Governor's Housing Bill, Senate Bill SB 1537.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Well, the city attorney, is this an ordinance?
Do I get to vote no?
Well, just a second. I'm trying to make sure it's an ordinance or the, it's a resolution?
No.
So give you a roll call, please. Just to make it clear.
Counselor Thompson?
No.
Counselor Montague?
Yes.
Counselor McLeod?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor McGee?
Yes.
Counselor Newton Azor?
I'll vote no.
Did motion pass? Quarter two? Thank you. Next on the agenda is business from the public. Business from the public is a time for Albany residents to speak and for counselors to listen. The council will not discuss the topic, topics, or make decisions during business from the public, but will take comments and requests under advisement. Speakers are limited to three minutes and must follow the council's rules and observe the standards of decorum. If unable to do so, they will be asked to step down and will be asked to be seated in the audience for the rest of the meeting. When you get the opportunity to the microphone, please give your name and state whether you live in the city of Albany, Oregon. First up is Mr. Eric Anderson.
Good evening. I'm going to have Jessica Becker start out first.
Okay.
I'm Jessica Becker, and I do live in the city of Albany. Honorable mayor, city council members, and community members, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jessica Becker, and until recently, I had the privilege of serving as the executive director of Albany Helping Hands. Joining me tonight is Eric Anderson, a former board president and former board member of this organization. We come before you this evening to bring urgent attention to the state of Albany Helping Hands, an organization that has long served the most vulnerable members of our community, but is now being mismanaged and controlled by an unethical and harmful board of directors. Eric and I, on multiple occasions, have pleaded with the board to change their behavior, to operate with integrity, and to prioritize the mission of the organization. We have warned them that if they had no desire to change, they should step down for the good of the shelter and the people it serves. Instead of listening, they used intimidation and manipulation tactics to maintain power, targeting, and removing anyone who challenged their control. Their toxic leadership has driven out staff, silenced concerned voices, and severely damaged the trust of donors and community partners. Despite investigations by the Oregon Department of Justice and the Oregon Bureau of Labor and Industries identifying serious issues, this board refuses to acknowledge wrongdoing and sees violations as mere suggestions rather than urgent issues requiring immediate correction. The community deserves to know what is happening inside Albany Helping Hands. The individuals responsible for running this much-needed shelter have demonstrated time and time again that they are unfit for leadership. At this point, I will turn it over to Eric Anderson to provide further insight into what has transpired.
As a former board member of over two years, I have witnessed firsthand the inner workings of Albany Helping Hands and the way in which the board has failed the organization. I can confirm that the concerns raised by the community, the media, and the investigations are absolutely true. During my tenure, I identified several unethical and possibly illegal actions committed by board members, including board members refusing to have two individuals count donated cash, which goes against standard financial oversight practices, board members billing the organization for personal services that they rendered on site, an attempted property sale to a private individual, which was done by a current board member and not disclosed to the board, to the board, or to the buyer, a board member taking shelter items home for personal use, deciding unilaterally what was no longer needed, a board member using physical force on a staff member as recently as January 16th, and this has been documented in the past where the same board member had been committed this a couple of years ago. And there's current bully violations.
Excuse me. Can you reset to three minutes, please? Because he finished her time, and always had three minutes for himself.
All right. Perfect. Thank you. Current bully violations regarding civil rights violations and whistleblower retaliation. When I confronted the board with these issues, I was swiftly voted out. This is a pattern as the board removes anyone who speaks up. One of the most concerning realities is that the 12-person board micromanages all the day-to-day operations while rarely visiting the property. They dictate policies, interfere with operations, and make sweeping financial decisions, all without understanding the real challenges of running a homeless shelter. Even more alarming is the financial control of one individual, the current board treasurer. The treasurer has full and unchecked control over all financial decisions. There is no oversight or accountability on how the financial resources are managed. This lack of transparency is dangerous and poses a significant risk to the shelter's future stability. Furthermore, the current person in charge, handpicked by the board, has no experience in running a homeless shelter. Instead of hiring qualified leadership, the board maintains a firm grip of power to serve their own interests. Currently, there's around 120 people residing at Albany Helping Hands. Some have been there for well over a decade, not because they don't want to move on, but because the board has not done anything to help them transition into stable housing. Last fall, Helping Hands approached the city to acquire surplus properties to build low-income housing. There was a feasibility study that was done and showed that the project could be self-sustaining with proper funding and donor support. Instead of moving forward in good faith, certain board members sought to turn this into a for-profit investment opportunity by wanting to create a separate entity outside of the nonprofit. This bait-and-switch tactic was unethical and completely against the mission of Helping Hands. Meanwhile, the shelter's properties are in severe risk repair. The homes along Jackson, Jefferson, and Ninth Avenue are unsafe and should not have people living in them. This is not a failure of the staff. It is a failure of board leadership. The board has failed in its mission. They have silenced and removed anyone who calls for accountability, created an environment of fear and intimidation for staff, made critical financial decisions with zero oversight, refused to provide real housing solutions for long-term residents. The time for half-measures is over. The shelter and its residents cannot afford another year of mismanagement. The city, community stakeholders, and donors must demand board accountability. The current board must provide public, transparent explanations for its actions. The board treasurer should not have unchecked financial control over the organization. I'll leave you.
Thank you. Thank you. Your time is expiring in 10 seconds.
Okay. We are just here tonight because we deeply care about Albany Helping Hands. We believe in its mission and the people it serves, but this board is destroying what so many in our community have worked to build.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Would you like to leave your comments with the clerk? Did anybody that did not sign up to speak to business from the public, you please, you can speak now. Oh, I'm sorry, let's go right up. There you are. Thank you, Director.
Thank you. Pleasure to be here this evening. I'm just going to do a quick downtown update as I do most months. We have our big fundraiser coming up. This is called Mixology Madness. This is an event where we have a cocktail competition. This year, we are moving to the Flynn Block Hall, which will provide a larger space for the bartenders who are magically making their concoctions behind a secret curtain. And then in front, our volunteers will provide those to guests, who will vote on their favorites, and then we will reveal who made what. The rest of the evening will continue with additional food, fun, and beverages. And again, this is a fundraiser for the Downtown Association, and more can be found at mixologymadness.com and on our website, and Facebook, and our newsletter. Wanted to let everyone know that the Oregon Main Street Revitalization Grant is coming up, and the Downtown Association will be pursuing two grants. I said we would only do one. We're going to do two again. We did multiple meetings and tours. The committee made some excellent progress in their selections. And the first grant application, which we apply to the state in hopes to get, will be for $400,000. This grant will be for the revitalization of the Rialto Theater, which we know today as the Albany Civic Theater. I think that they will have some big announcements soon on some wonderful plans that they have, and I'm not at liberty to share those quite yet, but look forward to some great news on that project. The second grant is going to be roofs on First. So we'll be doing four roofs, four different buildings on First Avenue that are in need of securing the lifespan of their property by replacing roofs. So the pre-applications were submitted, reviewed, selections made, and now we're in the process of writing grants. So if anyone is supportive of these projects, we would appreciate letters of support and contact me on that. So other things, Valentine's Day is coming up Friday. Don't forget, there's still lovely gifts to be purchased downtown. Would like to recognize Jenna Metting, who chairs our Economic Vitality Committee and our volunteer spotlight. Lots more events coming up, including Ride the Cyclone, which is coming up, opens on February 21st at Albany Civic Theater. And the annual photo contest is open now for the Albany Visitor Association, and includes a new youth micro video category. And thank you to everyone that came to the chocolate walk. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Chocolate walk? Did you get the memo on that one?
First Friday in February is our chocolate walk.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda tonight, item five is your adoption of consent calendar. Does any counsel have any comments or?
My only comment is that I'm glad to see the right-of-way dedications for the Gary Street Sidewalk Project. Yay.
Second that. I move we adopt the consent agenda as written.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. Item six, second reading of ordinances, Albany Development Code ADC and Comprehensive Plan CP amendments to implement strategies in the Housing Implementation Plan and Catlin, pages three through 161, 163 of the packet. Speaker Attorney?
Thank you. An ordinance amending ordinance number 44401, which adopted the City of Albany Development Code, by amending the Albany Development Code and amending ordinance number 4836, which adopted the City of Albany Comprehensive Plan, by amending the Albany Comprehensive Plan and adopting findings.
Would the counsel like to make a motion?
Move to adopt the ordinance.
All those in favor, what do you mean? Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion that a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I would like to have a discussion about this. I know it's a replay, but.
No problem. So is there, before we vote, is there a discussion?
Yeah, yeah, I have a comment. You know, I'll restate my concerns. This is a significant regulatory changes to our neighborhood, to the livability of Albany. And I did, I have thought of some questions. Are we doing, I know it's required. I know it's coming from, much of this is coming from the state. I realize that. But are we doing the bare minimum? Because that is, you know, for a couple of years, that was kind of what was told to people, that we're doing this, we have to do this. Well, that means you should be doing exactly enough. You know, I'll just throw out one example, setbacks. Setbacks, I think in here are three feet. Can we do four feet? Could we do five feet? I could, I could go through there. There's a difference between we have to do this and we like doing this. And I'll also, I'll hearken back to our, the testimony we got last week. Natalie Janney came from Salem, a developer from Salem, and she called Albany a golden child in this process, a golden child. Well, I just don't think we need to be a golden child. My ears go up when a developer, and Natalie and her father have run that business for many years. They would have been in favor of these kind of changes 10 years ago, 20 years ago. They would always be in favor of these changes. And to us being a leader, I question that. I question if we're just doing enough. And, you know, I, I hearken back to during the discussion over the fees on Senate Bill 1537, I get a quote from, from Matthew in front of the legislature, raising some real questions. And I have other quotes, too. So I, I'm kind of confused. I think we're kind of talking out of both sides of our mouth. We're talking, we have to do this, telling people, neighbors, we have to do this. And then other people are telling us, boy, you guys are leading the charge in the state. And so those are my concerns. I'm going to vote no, because this is a, this is a kind of change to the neighborhoods that, without any guarantee of significant building, no guarantee of affordable housing, and lots of costs for current residents. And so I'll be voting no.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no?
No.
Do a roll call, please, sir.
Counselor Thompson?
No.
Counselor Montague?
Yes.
Counselor McLeod?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor McGee?
Yes.
Newton Azor?
And Counselor Newton Azor?
I'm a yes.
Thank you. Motion passes five to one. Thank you. Ordinance passes. Next, adoption of resolutions. Adoption of resolutions calling Alpha is calling for election ballot title for the public safety operating levy. Director Jaeger will be speaking to us on pages 164 and 166 of your packet.
Good evening. Okay. We discussed this on the, at the January 22nd meeting, the election for the public safety levy. This is just setting the ballot title. Please disregard the mistake I made in the memo where I transposed two words. The, the resolution and the exhibit A are correct. Those would be what would be submitted to the counties. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counselors, have any questions for Director?
So if we pass this today, does that mean, I know that there's a certain point where we can't really advocate for it anymore. Is that today?
Staff can't.
Staff can't, but we can, because we're political bodies. But do we feel like we are ready for that? Did we do our due diligence education, whatever we needed to do staff-wise before today?
We've been discussing this for several months about what this would look like. So there will be more noticing going out to staff and reminding them that while we can act, while we can answer factual questions, we, we can't express an opinion on it.
Okay.
Does that answer your question, Counselor Montague? Or I think you were asking something else about the due diligence.
I guess I'm assuming that you wouldn't have put it in the packet if you guys weren't ready.
Correct. That's correct.
All right.
So we did have a meeting, we had a meeting with several retired police officers and fire department personnel, our current fire chief, and they brought data, Kayla provided some data to me. So the pack will be up and running here shortly, and I'll be out running my mouth, talking to folks about public safety levy. And I love it that each of you would join me at least at one or two events.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I have a resolution. Do we have a motion?
Counselor? Move to adopt the resolution on page 166.
I have a motion and a second. Thank you, counselors. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you. Next, item B, under resolutions, accept appropriate and appropriate FY 24, 25, State Hazardous Material Emergency Preparedness Grant, Fire Chief Chris LaBelle and Chuck Marino, Emergency Manager, pages 167 to 213 of your packet. I'm about to do something.
Sorry, it's Chuck Marino.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chuck Marino. Oh, I'm sorry, Chuck Marino. I thought it was here.
I think he's coming back in now.
My blood sugar was low. I needed to deal with that. So happy to be here. Sorry about that.
No worries.
Oh, this is regarding the, the grant for the HMEP program. This is the hazmat grant that we typically do. This has been going on for a number of years here, at least 10 or so, is what I'm guessing. And, or is this for the?
This is hemp.
Okay, great.
H-M-E-P.
Great. So this is for that hazmat program that we do. It's a grant that we receive for a number of different programs. This one in particular will be for two exercises that we have going on. One will be for a City of Albany Emergency Operations Center grant, and the other one will be for a full-scale hazmat grant as well.
Councilors, any other questions? Counselor Smith?
What is the source of the money? Is it state or federal?
It is state. I assume that would be one of your questions.
Yeah.
This has been pre-loaded as far as grants for last year, coming forward for future grants that might be, might be, might be interesting in itself, so.
The state gets its money from?
I can't, I can't answer that. But, but it is definitely coming from the state Fire Marshal's Office.
Thank you.
Any other councilors have any questions? I think programs like this are awesome. I was on my shift hazmat team when I was in the Navy, and we had to know where all the MSDS is restored, now to read them and interpret them, what was in the actual lockers in the spaces. So I think this is a fantastic exercise. I appreciate that.
It's a good program, and it's, it doesn't just benefit the City of Albany. It benefits other cities around the area as well as the state hazmat team as well. So it's something that we work pretty well with.
Thank you. So council, do I have a motion?
I move that we accept the resolution on page 168.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Thank you very much. You're all good.
All good. Thank you.
Next, accept and appropriate Oregon Department of Human Services grant for satellite communications equipment and service for our Chief Crystal Bell and Emergency Manager Chuck Marino.
I had a feeling I was coming back up here, but I didn't want to second-guess you, so.
No, I didn't see your name until I got to the last.
This is for a, this was a statewide grant, again, with state money from, from the state for a number of different things. It needed to focus on community resilience. And we decided, myself and Sean Park, to apply for the satellite internet service. And we were lucky enough to receive that in a year of service with that. Sean will be picking up the remainder years of service out of his budget. So that's how that will, will go on.
I have a question about that. Why is that coming out of the IT budget instead of emergency services budget?
I don't have much of a budget, that's why. We could do that, and in future years, we will, we may be having that discussion whether or not they will be tag-teaming the budget on that. But for right now.
Hey, there you are. Good evening. The, the IT budget is going to pick up the annual cost for outgoers. This service will provide a layer of cybersecurity resiliency should we lose primary internet connectivity to City Hall and our citywide wide area network between City Hall, the main police station, main library, and Public Works.
So does IT generally foot the bill for cybersecurity for all the departments?
It does, yes. Cybersecurity is centralized.
That's normal.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
That's a good question. Thank you.
Councilors online, do you have anything?
I have a question.
I don't have anything.
I don't.
Counselor Smith?
How reliable is Starlink?
Of the wireless internet providers, it is the most reliable.
Thank you.
So council, would you like to make a motion?
I move to approve the resolution on page 215.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is award of contracts and bids. Exemption from, item A of that section is exemption from competitive bidding to purchase playground equipment and turf for Deerfield Park. Director Ladain, your items are 234 through page 257.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be back here. Pretty much just coming back in the hopes that you're going to approve the resolution from everything that we discussed on Monday. Have any new questions come up since then?
Council, any questions?
Now all my friends are very curious about playground-like surface areas. I've been just chatting with all my friends about it, so thanks for that.
Oh, send them my way. More questions mean I get to learn more, so it's good.
Councilors Newton and McGee? Newton or Azor? I'm McGee.
I don't have anything.
I have nothing.
Thank you. Counsel McLeod?
Nothing. I'm just eager to make the motion to approve this.
I have a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. Director Ladain, go build a park.
Thank you for the.
So next is exemption from competitive bidding, purchase online marketplace products and services with Amazon Business, Gina Jaeger, Director Jaeger, and Diane Rosinski.
Sorry about that. I was expecting Diane to be here, but she wasn't feeling well today. So we are wanting to enter into an agreement with Amazon. There is a cooperative program, and it will save us potentially 3% of our, of our spend each year. We currently spend about $214,000 with Amazon that we know of. That doesn't include people who maybe have made purchases on personal Amazon accounts or been reimbursed for Amazon purchases through petty cash or something like that. This will centralize that. That it will allow everybody who needs to make purchases, to make purchases. They will need to use city purchasing cards to do that. They will be restricted to those purchasing cards, but we can use them all across the city. Again, there is a potential for a rebate. The most that it will cost is probably about $3,500 a year, but we could get that back in rebates. So we feel like this is a really good direction to go because the, because of purchasing rules, we need to make sure that when we're spending that much money, that we have a contract in place. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Councilors, have any questions? Well, I'm on, I have a, I have a business account with them as well, and I buy my stuff from them. It saves me money, so.
It'll, it'll offer deeper discounts for us, too.
Yeah.
Like, trying to think about accounting applications for a refund from an Amazon business account is exactly why I didn't go into governmental accounting. So thank you for taking care of all that, because I, like, it's hurting my brain just thinking about how you are going to do that, but good luck.
Well, we, so currently with our, our purchasing card program that we have, we also receive rebates, and so we do allocate those out, so.
Okay, good luck.
We have some practice with that.
Okay. So council, where's the, where's the resolution on page 259? Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I move to accept the resolution on page, I have 260 on my.
Yes, 260. I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Next, item nine in your agenda packet is intergovernmental approval of agreements. Intergovernmental agreement with DCBS Building Codes Division. Jonathan Balkema, oh, there you are. Jonathan Balkema, a building official, page 262 to 273 in your packet.
Greetings, Mayor and Council. Here to request authorization to enter into an intergovernment agreement with DCBS to provide additional coverage for building inspection and plan review services, which would allow us to gather services from other jurisdictions when we needed additional assistance that we couldn't cover by staff, that we discussed at a work session. Here for any questions.
Council, do you have any questions for Jonathan? Please.
Thank you. So it's my understanding that with this, with this program, we can loan people out to other cities, and then we can also borrow people from other cities.
Correct.
How, what do you feel is the, is the balance there? Or is it, is it balanced or is it not balanced? In that, will we be loaning more people out or borrowing more people?
So this is a newer service that they just started offering last year. And I think as of last time I looked, which was for Monday, I believe there was only nine jurisdictions that have actually entered into this agreement. So we would potentially be 10 or just slightly above. So to answer your question, I don't 100% know, because we don't know. The true reality is you would try to balance it out, because obviously we don't want to extend ourselves to the point where we can't meet our own obligations. But we would want to be able to assist people, so they'd want to assist us in the same sense to a point. So the, like we discussed on Monday, the intent of this for ourselves at least is for more of a last resort type approach than a essential thing for every day. We use third parties primarily for our coverage, but at times they can't cover us because those same third parties are covering other jurisdictions also. So that way, we could put that request out to other jurisdictions and ask for coverage. Where we would be able to assist, say, like if Lynn County decided to join, I could see us being able to render assistance to them more frequently because of the close boundaries that we have, where it would make less sense to us to, say, go help Portland or something like that.
Thank you.
Great question. That was fantastic. Any other councilors have any questions? Counsel McGee? Counsel Newton Azor?
I do not. I have nothing.
Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt the resolution on page 263.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Thank you very much. Your resolution passes. Next on tonight's agenda is staff reports, personal changes in the IT Technology Department. Director Park is going to speak. Still here?
Good evening again. Before you this evening is a recommendation to approve the addition of 1.0 FTE for an IT business analyst in the Information Technology Department. I've outlined some of the details for that need in my memo. Happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding this position.
Councilors? Counsel Newton Azor? Counsel McGee?
I don't have anything at this moment.
I don't have anything either.
Smith?
It makes good sense.
So I'm really, is this a cybersecurity person, or at least working that area?
A portion of the FTE will operate within cybersecurity. Yeah, that encompasses so much of the roles we do, we take on on a day-to-day basis, that every IT position is, has some element of cybersecurity in it.
Yeah, I read stories about newspapers all across the nation being hammered or being hacked, and different organizations being hacked, so I think this is a great move. So thank you. So I have a motion. Do I have a motion and a second?
I move to approve the addition of the Information Technology Business Analyst.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is summer and winter 2025 city council meeting schedule. And our city recorder is going to be doing, your channel's changed, right, city recorder? City recorder Eric Glover.
Evening, Mayor and Council. A little different on the hot seat here, but we'll get through it. So included in your packets tonight was a memo about our summer and winter 2025 meeting schedule. In 2023, we had a request from Mayor Johnson to consider how to provide a six-week break during the summer months while remaining compliant with the Albany Charter for two meetings. We were developing that schedule for 2025, and it was noted in discussions that the six-week break was a pain point for some of our staff and departments. So as such, we put together a revised proposal that is in front of you all today. It is for our meeting schedule over the summer as well as November and December. And if you all have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Councilors?
I have a comment.
Please.
This is a lot better than the six-week break, in my opinion. It, it's sensible. It means that we will be in town during the Art and Air Festival to volunteer. And we come pretty close to that kind of a break in December, anyway. I, I just think it makes a lot more sense. It's going to be easier to remember for everyone, and thank you for making that change.
So councilors, Newton Azor, Counsel McGee?
I, it looks good to me. I haven't looked at how it lines up with Han holidays. So I just want to double-check that, just to make sure that I, I'm going to be here or I'm not going to be at my synagogue. But I'm sure that you checked through that correct when you're making this calendar.
Yeah, we, we did evaluate the holidays. That is correct.
Not just like the regular holidays, right? Like Jewish holidays as well?
We checked the federal holidays.
Okay. Will you give me like five minutes and I'll Google it real quick? Sorry, we have a 13-month calendar, and regularly, when it's a 12-month calendar, things shift. So give me a second just to make sure.
While you're doing that, I do have a question. You said it was a pain point for staff. Can you talk a little bit about that?
So the, the one thing is, is that many of our departments operate on different requirements related in notices, and there's a certain cadence that items have to be accomplished in. And we were finding that a lot of our departments were, were having to rush to, to meet things, and it was really providing issues for them, I, I guess.
And I don't know if you recall, it felt like there was a lot squished into before we left and then after we left. Like, we had a lot of business to do. And there was some emergency stuff that had to be done while we weren't here. So this makes a lot more sense. And also, this does give me my birthday off, so I do, I'm a fan of that. Really what's important here.
The, the other thing I did want to mention is that, as covered in the staff memo, obviously, if there's a pressing need for council business, we will make sure we do all the appropriate notices and get, get a meeting set to affect that.
So are we off for the entire month of September?
No, no.
You're required by charter to have two meetings per month.
I just wasn't seeing how it's a proposed summer schedule, then. Okay, so we're just like regular, regular meeting in September?
That would be correct.
Okay.
You know, my original reason for doing this was we have parents on city council, and it was to give them opportunity to have their summer with their kids, with their children, school students, and then be able to participate in the beginning of school, because there's a lot of meetings with teachers and things like that. That's why I wanted it six weeks, the way it was.
Yeah, 50% of council now has kids, in, living in-house with them, which is pretty cool. Yeah, the only thing is to cope, but that's, that's, it's fine. I can go to council during then. But yeah, I just don't know when we're meeting in September. It's, I'll just look. It's not related to this, though.
So we're good to move forward? So we're good to move forward? Counselor?
On, and yeah.
Have a motion?
I move to approve the adjusted city council meeting schedule for twenty twenty-five, November twenty twenty-five, December twenty twenty-five, as shown in the staff memo.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
I do have one suggestion to set the end to next year. Let's make sure that we look at the Jewish holidays and, and see if we can be accommodating as well, please. Thank you.
Can I comment? Never mind.
Thank you, counsel.
I, I'll just say that I, I made the assumption that that had already been done. So I, thank you to the counselors that, that pointed that out.
Thanks. So summer, well, next is summer, winter twenty, or I did that. Good. Next is business from the council. Who did I start with last time? I started with staff. Did I start with you? Okay, I'll start with Counselor Manigat this time.
I don't have anything at this time.
Okay, Counselor McLeod?
Nothing from me. Thank you.
Counsel, Counselor Newton Azor?
Nothing from me. My husband's still at urgent care, so.
Sorry to hear that.
Everyone, wash your hands and stay, don't get whatever, whatever's going around.
Hope Isla and Woody are safe.
Oh, they are well and healthy. And it has made parenting so, that much more difficult. We'll just say that.
Thank you. Counselor McGee?
Nothing's bad. Thank you.
Counselor Thompson?
Just real quick, I, you know, in the process of learning, I took a tour with Chris Bailey and Counselor McLeod, I think, last week, week before. Just learning about the organization, you know, showed us a bunch of public facilities. And I will continue to do that. There's lots to learn. You think you know it all, but there's lots, lots going on.
That's fantastic.
Yeah.
It is a journey. And Counselor Smith?
I had an opportunity last night to participate in a council meeting in Harrisburg, my hometown. And I found myself caught up in the, the emotion of the agenda item and misbehaved in ways that we'd want people to not misbehave in these meetings. And so I, from thirty-five miles away, I apologize to Harrisburg City Council for engaging them in conversation and making suggestions out of turn. But the end result was good. The council agreed to become a sister city with the city in Brittany that I visited last year, where there is a memorial to a World War II pilot who was killed there at, one week after D-Day. They have kept his memory alive since June thirteen nineteen forty-four, renamed a street for him. They've had a number of commemorations for a monument that is in the middle of the town. And they have been wanting to be a sister city with Harrisburg since the monument was first put up in nineteen ninety-five. As it turns out, the mayor of Harrisburg lives in the house where the pilot grew up. It, the coincidence is just unbelievable. But it was a, it was a very good discussion. The city administrator there did a terrific job of researching the background of the family, of the, the, the request. And discovered that at, during World War II, Harrisburg, Harrisburg, Oregon, had more active service members per capita than any other city in the United States. They're a very patriotic community. It remains that way. And they are very excited to participate in this ongoing commemoration for Lieutenant Russell Quinn and get kids involved and do displays at the museum. It's, it's really pretty exciting. I was very glad that they, they received the request that way. So it was, it was interesting to participate. They don't know I'm a city counselor and wasn't relevant to the discussion. But, so I just behaved like a, an over, overexcited member of the public. And it happens to the best of us.
Awesome. Thank you.
I have nothing else.
I, like I said, last Monday, the Ifwe America contest is going on right now. And teachers have been reaching out to me to go to their classrooms and speak with their kids. And this lovely young man, thirteen, fourteen years old, he says, when are you going to have lunch with us? So counselors, I said, call your city counselor and have them join us. And so you might be getting phone calls from teachers or principals, but I think it was a great gesture on their part to invite me out to have lunch with the kids. And the contest is going swimmingly, what I understand from the teachers and the participation. I know that seventy-eight kids from Calipulia Middle Schools are writing essays right now. So I'm pretty excited about that. And then yesterday, the Willamette Valley Jaguars basketball, semi-pro basketball team is, is based out of Albany, Oregon. I went to their first practice and it was amazing watching these six foot eight, six foot nine, because I haven't been around basketball players in a long time. But there's a lot of support for them. And they invited me to go to their first game. And we don't have a facility yet here, but they're practicing at the Y. And it's, it's, it's really cool to see these young men play. And several local young men from our high schools are on that team as well. So, and then other than that, be safe this weekend. Enjoy your, just time off, time away. But I would like to say, if you know anyone that's on Medicare, there's a lot of scam calls going on right now. Several of my clients have called and said, somebody called them and said, your agent put you in the wrong solution. We can help you. And they called me first, which I really appreciate. But please tell your family members that are on Medicare, disregard those calls, call their own agent and find out what's really going on. And with that, I'll turn it over to city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder, we do have an executive session to follow with a litigation update. On your dais at your seat, I've distributed a copy of this book, Escaping the Housing Trap by Charles Marone. And Counselor Thompson, I'll get one to you. I didn't get a chance to get directly to you. And also to Counselor McGee and Newton Azor. So Charles Marone is the author of Strong Towns. This book is just for your reading pleasure to help give another perspective on growth and development and the future of cities. It doesn't reflect any kind of an endorsement on my part or any of the staff's part. Just, just some reading for you. Tomorrow morning, there's a, a real risk of weather delays. And in fact, the GAPS district has announced a two-hour delay tomorrow morning. And then the League of Oregon Cities Region Four meeting in Philomath on Friday has been canceled because of that weather. And I'd like to call Matthew Rutgers up to, to, I wanted to clarify a little bit about that agenda item number six, the changes to the development code and the comprehensive plan. Because there was, there might have been a little bit of a misunderstanding about why that was in the package. So Matthew, please.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and Counselor. So first, I actually did want to thank Counselor Thompson for reading into the testimony, Senate Bill fifteen thirty-seven. That can be a bit of a, a dull read on some of that, but we do make our best attempt to provide comments at the state level. When, when we're speaking about, we'll address a few things there. The reference to the, the golden child comment that was made by Ms. Cheney, she has since apologized to me and said, geez, I hope I didn't, didn't get you into trouble there. And clarified with her, you know, that, that comment was really directed towards not that we, we give away the farm. It's really towards, it's been a, a direction of prior councils and, and really a source of pride for staff that we treat our customers very well. Our customer service bar is really high and we've, we've worked very, very hard on our processes. So it's, it's not so much as our development code is super easy. It is, our processes are very, very, very well refined and easy for people to understand. The, when we, we talk about the development code amendments that were, came to you before tonight, it, I know that you see a lot of these and it can be pretty, pretty overwhelming. This one in particular was not through state mandates. These were ones that were addressed through, actually, the council had asked us to form a housing affordability task force several years ago. That task force met for about eighteen months. And we developed what was called the Housing Implementation Plan, which we lovingly refer to because we love acronyms, the HIP. That HIP was really designed to look at ways or strategies that we, as a city, not the state, could actually impact that housing affordability piece. You know, how do we, how could we move the needle even if it was just so slightly? So we developed in the HIP a, a number of different types of strategies, whether it be land use, financial, and then brought those to council and received direction to kind of pursue the, these higher priority strategies. This amendment package was actually one of them. Were there, these are locally grown ideas that we believe will actually have an impact versus some of the things that we see coming down from the state, which, which are more of kind of this broad stroke, hey, this is what you have to do. These are things that we've been working on for some time from the direction from the council that, that we believe in, in our discussions with the community, as well as with builders, local builders, and people building in Albany that could, and we believe will have the opportunity to, to have an impact. So that, just wanted to clarify, I know there's a, you guys see a lot of code amendments and they can get pretty confusing, but.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, in my head, yes, I have read of the Housing Implementation, Implementation Program. In my head, I conflated that with Senate Bill fifteen thirty-seven and some of the efforts in the state. So, so my bad on that, that sense. Though, though I, I'm going to have to disagree a little bit. The overall, like, like me conflating it, and many people will conflate it. And it is, it is all density. It is all regulatory. And interest rates, building costs, cost, labor costs are all very much a part of, of building. And I just think we're making significant changes to neighborhoods with no guarantee that there will, there will flow from that massive building.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
The city council will now meet an executive session to discuss current litigation or litigation likely to be filed in accordance with ORS one nine two dot six six zero subsection two, subsection H. Representatives of the news media and designated staff and other persons shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other participants must exit. Online audience members will be moved into the waiting room. When the council returns to open session, staff will readmit those remaining in the waiting room to rejoin the meeting. In-person audience members must leave the council members and wait in the hallway. When the council returns to open session, staff will open the doors and you can rejoin the meeting. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decisions will be made in the executive session. I now recessed executive session at six fifty-seven.
Let folks back in if they're still here. So with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. The next meeting is, excuse me, next meeting is Monday, February 24th,